For order, this is the City Council Business Meeting for Wednesday, January 6, 2021. Let's rise and say the.
Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Skrenti?
Present.
Councilwoman Riley? And I believe she's absent. Councilwoman Friedman?
Present.
Councilman Burns?
Present.
Councilman Strong?
Present.
Councilman Scanlon?
Present.
And President Resonetti?
Present.
That's six here, one absent, Riley.
Okay, so next we have the couple of minutes of Councilman Strong.
You might still do that? Uh, thank you, Madam President. I ask Council for unanimous approval of the minutes from the December 23, 2020 Business Meeting and January 4, 2021 Organizational Meeting.
All in favor? Or is it?
Joe, second. So all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, so now we will need to set a public hearing, please.
Yes. Okay, so Binghamton City Council and the mayor will hold a public hearing regarding the proposed 2021 bond ordinance, which is RL 21-09, and this is to finance various capital improvements as outlined in the city's 2021 capital improvement plan at the estimated cost not to exceed $6,520,000. This public hearing will take place during the next regular City Council Business Meeting at 6:00 PM on January 20th, 2021, in the second floor atrium in City Hall. Residents wishing to submit comments for public hearing may do so electronically by emailing their comments prior to 5:30 on the day of meeting to clerk@cityofbington.com or via telephone during the public hearing at 772-7101, as City Hall will be closed during the public hearing.
Thank you, Lee. And so now we're going to move on to public comments. City residents are welcome to call in.
Madam President?
Yes?
This is Kenneth Frank. Lee, aren't we having two hearings on the bond? One for the 2021 bond and one for an amendment to the fire bond?
We might be. I sent you and Chuck an email earlier today about it, asking about it.
Our emails weren't working in many parts of City Hall today, so my suggestion is announce the other one as well. We can always withdraw it if necessary, but my understanding is that it will be prepared.
Okay, so it's a public hearing for the construction, for the, uh, the bond to pay for the construction for the new fire headquarters, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so also during that time, uh, at our next regular City Council Business Meeting at 6:00 PM, we'll have the second public hearing for, uh, bond in relation to the construction for the new fire headquarters.
And can you please also note that Councilwoman Riley is in attendance?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Thank you for that announcement, Ken.
Thank you. Okay, we can move on to the public.
Okay, great, thank you. So now we'll move on to public comment. City residents are welcome to call in. You will have five minutes to speak on city issues. Please be respectful. Lee, could you please read that number?
Yes, so the number to call in tonight is 772-7101. You can call us right here at 772-7101 for public comment tonight. Are you here for public comment? Hey, please state your name and address. Okay, I'll put you through. Okay, this is John Solak from Lathrop Avenue in Binghamton.
Hello, making history here, the first ever regular city council meeting at 6:00 PM. Not a very convenient time for citizens. Town of Union, 8/7, 7:30, these meetings all over, school boards. Why is it that in this mayoral election year, you would meet at 6:00 PM? Who is going to take responsibility for this? The news coverage, the news stations are on at 6:00 PM, looks like a complete contempt for citizens or people that are interested in participating, which makes me think that big things are on the horizon for the city of Binghamton. Big, bad things. Things that, uh, don't want to stand scrutiny or be out in the light of day. It's alarming. Now, you've got a parking ramp, and I don't know how it's going to hold up, a new one. The Lord's parking ramp has a lot of problems. It leaks, water comes gushing through all different spots. It has insects all over the place. So, uh, I wonder if your parking ramp, since the construction methodology is the same, will, will hold up any better than the Lord's ramp. What I do suggest you do, and this city doesn't have many sources of revenue, taxes and fees and, uh, transfer payments, I would suggest that you mix the public art. Don't put any more ugly, uh, public art up. Uh, the great thing about the digital billboards that you see in front of the schools and other places is that they, uh, not only make it look like something's going on, that there's a, a degree of liveliness, uh, they not only serve informational purposes, advertising purposes, but they also throw off light. So I would suggest immediately that any thinking person, uh, put up a number of digital billboards on that parking ramp. You can get the revenue. You, people can, uh, bask in the safety of light that's being given off. And I further suggest that digital billboards be placed all over in city parks, uh, just anywhere and everywhere, that it can produce revenue for the city. And certainly, if you can bombard us with 5G, uh, you certainly can, uh, put up these, uh, electronic billboards. I think that is a good idea. But public art, uh, to me, uh, has turned out to be a warning sign. And I don't care whether it's in Philadelphia, wherever it is. It ghettoizes and makes people want to run away from public art. Uh, most of it is trash. Most of it is garbage. Uh, there's, uh, very little of it that is worthy of any mention. Uh, but to junk up the city with more ghetto-like, uh, so-called art, uh, is going to make the city even more foreboding than it is now. Uh, you have now, uh, put all your eggs in one basket, healthcare and education, student rentals, and restaurants, and you're seeing the effect of that. You're seeing a non-diversified downtown. So who's ever going to be, uh, the next mayor or the mayoral candidates, they have got to be for the people. And this council meeting at 6:00 is not something that can be construed as anything but an inside baseball. And I suggest, uh, that people think long at heart. And remember, when you hand out these brochures and you put your family pictures on them, remember you're involving your family in politics. Remember, if you put a religious affiliation, you're involving your church and your beliefs. So if someone says that they're a member of this church, and we all can look up the beliefs of these various religions, and then they advocate policies, uh, that are anathema, uh, totally against those religions, uh, we know we've got a liar on our hands. We know we've got, uh, things. So I suggest that the city clean up and clean house. I suggest that the police department, uh, give more information. You know, we get spotty information on the weekends. Uh, they're investigating an incident. Uh, you know, every other town is forthcoming, uh, and I think the Binghamton needs to get forthcoming and Binghamton needs to see the light.
Your time is up. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the number again to call in is 772-7101. Hi, you're here for public comment? Okay, what's your name and address? All right, I'll put you through. Okay, this is Emily Javelin at Mill Street.
Hi, well, first, I would like to thank everybody, um, as well apologize for all of the bullshit you guys had to hear about me, um, over the.
Excuse me, uh, there's no profanity. Thank you.
Oh, all right. Got it. Sorry. Apologize. But I totally apologize for the time that slipped up and you guys having to hear that. And also, thank you for doing absolutely nothing about it, because everything they said is not true. But anyway, what I'm here today to talk about Columbus Park, I'm just going to give a little background real quick. So my name is Emily Gavlin. I've been doing public work for 11 years.
Emily, I'm sorry, could, could you speak up a bit? We're, we're having trouble hearing you.
Okay, can you, is it better now?
Yes.
Okay, um, I've been doing public work for 11 years without any problems or issues, all in this community. Um, there are award-winning community-based programs, which have been a complete success, um, because everybody wins, not just the participants and me with my local business, but the cities, the residents, our visitors, schools, the different populations I work with, the officials who support them, the parks, the blighted neighborhoods and the residents, which is my favorite. And these programs even set up future generations of Binghamton to win as well. They will be able to enjoy and take pride in these community mosaics like we do with the artists today. So while so that's the point about the public art, it's different when you look at the mosaics and you look at the artists, because this is more of something that can just seem as art history, and they will stand the test of time and not fade, fill out a beautiful, high-quality cereal. So my is, my community programs have turned our home into a walking art museum, attracting prospective students, young families, entrepreneurs. These mosaics are loved and cherished by this community. They enrich our arts and culture, and they think of them unique and memorable. No other city in the world has a community art program like this, and it shows. So when programs are attacked, so is everything else I just listed, it's also attacked. So like I said, I've been doing it 11 years without a single problem. And, um, when I went to Columbus Park, which was a three-phase program, um, during phase one, the mosaics were named Columbus Park in black letters, uh, to the restaining wall of Columbus Park, at, uh, the mayor's discretion, because it is the name of the park and it's a good idea. Many of the Democratic and plot leaders were at the studio, at the park, and at the press release throughout the entire whole program. They were there in support of the program, 1,000%, and there was never a mention of the name of the park being an issue by the Democratic and plot leaders or by students involved in the program, who were 75% skinless colors. And there was certainly not a mention of the color of my student, of the color of my skin of my youth participants. When I went back to phase two of Columbus Park, I was met by the Democratic and plot leaders with hate and fabricated racism by the same people who were fine and supportive during phase one. They literally created racism that did not exist and stuffed it into my program and everything that it involved, because simply of the name of the park, which guess what? I didn't name, and I would change if, but that's not my done. And for the first time ever, the Democratic and plot leaders were making a huge deal over my participants, all youth, and the color of their skin. Even though we were doing absolutely nothing different, we were doing our summer job, they were getting paid, I was getting paid, everything, everything was the same on our end, but we were getting slammed, because the kids in my program were mostly not white. Okay? The only factor that was new for phase two.
You have one minute.
Was Aviva Friedman is the new kid for that area. So I would like to speak to Aviva directly for the rest of this, if that's okay. Aviva, what are your thoughts on the name of Columbus Park? Hello?
Hi, this is Ken Frank, just for clarification. This is certainly an opportunity for people to speak. It's not necessarily a question and answer period. So I leave that up to, you know, the council people, but, you know, taking your time.
This is my first time, so I'm just a little confused. Is he there? Is he present?
Yes, I, I am here, but like Corporation Council said, this is not necessarily a question and answer session, and I don't want to take up any of your time.
No, Aviva, what do you think of the name of Columbus Park? Do you like it or do you not like it? Want to change it? Do you not want to change it? What are your thoughts on it? Because it's creating a divide in our community for no reason.
Emily, thank you. Your time is up. Thank you.
Okay, bye.
Okay, the, yes, the number again is 772-7101. Hi, you're here for public comment? Okay, what's your name and address? Okay, I'll put you through. Okay, this is Tina Chronopoulos from Laurel Avenue.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good, super, thank you. Um, hi, my name is Tina Chronopoulos, I live in Laurel. I'm here as my representative on City Council is Sophia Ratimiti. I have to do about two things this evening. One thing is, um, I'm in agreement with the caller, not the previous caller, but the one previous to that, um, the changing of the meeting time. When you all were discussing this last year, I thought that it was a little suspect that you needed to do this. The reason that you were due seemed, um, you know, ten years at best. I have to say that a meeting time of 6:00 rather than 6:30 disadvantages people who have full-time working jobs, who have other obligations, and I personally see it as a way of trying to, um, you know, make sure that you don't get so many folks calling in, holding you accountable, asking you to do your job, which, um, you know, as I'm sure you know, is something that I'm very interested in, and I continue to see you doing exactly that, namely trying to avoid being transparent and trying to do your job, asking questions as you should, um, calling me out for, for asking questions and just generally keeping tabs on me. So, um, yes, I agree with the caller from the previous, um, order two ago. And then the other thing that I would like to talk about, as you know, is the stakeholder coalition on police reform, which is also relevant or refers to the, um, executive order of Governor Cuomo 203. You may or may not be aware that the deadline for this coalition to submit its substantive reporting is the 1st of April. That is, um, less than four months away. The work of this coalition is to engage the public in several meetings, engage the public in several substantive meetings, and to, um, you know, make sure that all voices are heard, that people can really explain what their issues are with policing in this city and, and contribute to a report that, you know, maybe recommends some changes or some useful things that should be happening. And we have yet to hear from the mayor or his executive assistants about this coalition. Who is on it? We don't know. Who's applied? We don't know. I've submitted some fire requests, I'm sure you know this, to find out about this, but you are being secretive. Why? What are you trying to hide? What are you up to? I can't help but that there's something going on, and of course, you're all in cahoots with each other. You know, maybe you can bring the mayor to a city council meeting and ask him some questions, but maybe you can't. Well, if you can't do that, if you can't bring him to a city council meeting, why don't you all, as city council members, ask the mayor to a meeting and explain what he is doing about the stakeholder coalition and why it is taking such a long time to put it together? As you know, there are other cities in the states who've already started working, who've already engaged members of the public, right? I cannot believe that this is what's going on. This city claims to be, I don't know, somehow special or somehow amazing, and the mayor claims to be somehow transparent, to be doing reforms, to be doing new things. Absolutely not the case. And if you look to the news, we know that the Binghamton, uh, Police Department, contrary to its claims, has, you know, there are allegations of sexism, there are allegations of racism going back many, 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 many years. So I think what you all are trying to do is just, you know, put it all under the carpet, make sure that you don't do the same, that you're going to get away with it, and just carry on being, you know, letting the, the Binghamton Police Department or some of its police officers continue to be racist and sexist, because, you know, we live in the United States, look what's going, has gone down in DC, you know, patriots are storming the SCAP capital, white patriots. So I'm not really surprised. Um, and that is the end of my call. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lee, just quickly, briefly, just as an FYI, uh, regarding the coalition that the caller was talking about, I know the mayor will be rolling out, uh, the plan and schedule in the next few days, and I'm sure any questions folks have regarding this will be addressed at that time. Lee, could you please, uh, tell, uh, tell us the number?
Sorry, can you say that again a little bit louder? I couldn't really hear you, uh, Council President Resonetti.
What I said was that I know the mayor will be rolling out the plan and schedule in the next few days, and I'm sure that any questions folks have regarding this will be addressed at the time.
And that's going to be in a press release, or how will we be notified?
Um, I'm not exactly sure, but I do know the plans to roll out, uh, better from.
Okay, so council will be notified, or, or you just had that information?
I'm sorry?
So we will be notified as well, or?
Forwarded to council.
I would believe so, yes. And any additional questions regarding this would be addressed at that time. Thank you.
We'll forward it to council.
Mr. Rogers, whenever you're ready.
Yeah, okay, all right. Thank you. Bye. That was Emily. She wanted to talk again.
I'm sorry?
That was Emily Javelin again. She wanted to talk for a second time, and I told her to call back two weeks or to email us. Okay, so that number one last time is 772-7101. Been over a minute.
I'm sorry?
It's been a minute.
Want to just get the number one more time?
Sure, we'll give the number out one last time. That's 772-7101 for public comment tonight.
You see, we're not getting close, so we can move on.
Okay.
So let's move on into the preferred agenda. Would anyone like to pull anything from the preferred agenda before we move on?
Yes, this is Councilwoman Friedman. Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted, there's just one piece of legislation I wanted to double-check on, that's Resolutions 21-02. It seems to, it's on page 15 of the packet, or, um, yeah, the last page of the packet. It seems to be incomplete. I'm wondering if that's supposed to end in a period, and that, that last "and be it further" is a typo, or if we're missing some of that legislation?
No, uh, this is Kenneth Frank. Councilwoman, actually Maggie Redden is on with us as well. She sent me a note that it was missing the last three sentences, actually. Right? I sent them to Lee within the last minute or two. When we get to that legislation, I'll be happy to read those sections. I'm not sure what got posted was missing the last three, uh, resolves.
Okay, yes, that would be great. I haven't had a chance to read those, so I, I would appreciate that. Thank you. So question, for that legislation to be read in its entirety, it would need to be moved from the preferred agenda, correct?
No, it, it can be read. I'm just going to suggest, uh, the final amended language. Right? And so somebody can make a motion to amend it as read and then approve it that way, and then the entire preferred agenda can be approved in one vote, or it can be removed and we can address it separately.
Would somebody like to remove it from the preferred agenda, or just go ahead and have Ken read? Okay.
Well, this, this is Councilwoman Riley. Um, I'd like to request that... Sorry about that. Cancel. I, I rescind that, uh, partial motion. Sorry about that. Please proceed.
Okay, um, please.
All right. Okay, so we'll, we'll read through with the preferred agenda. The first item tonight is introductory ordinance 20-01, considered in finance. This is an ordinance to amend the 2021 Department of Public Works Central Garage and Maintenance Roads Budget.
Any discussion regarding this?
Next is introductory ordinance 20-02, considered in finance, and it's an ordinance to amend the 2020 Department of Public Works budget for vehicle parts.
Ken, is this where you? Read the China? No. Any questions?
Okay, next we have introductory ordinance 20-03, considered in finance. This is an ordinance to amend the 2020- This is an ordinance to amend the 2020 Unemployment Insurance Budget for Additional Claims.
Any questions?
Okay, next we have introductory ordinance 20-04, considered in finance. And this is an ordinance to amend the 2020 Federal Statistics Budget to Reconcile Personal Services.
Any questions?
Next is introductory ordinance 20-05, considered in finance. This is an ordinance to amend the 2020 Fire Department Budget for Overtime.
Questions?
Next we have introductory ordinance 20-06, considered in finance. This is an ordinance to amend the 2021 Administration Budget for Temporary Services.
Any questions?
Next we have introductory ordinance 20-07, considered in finance. And this is an ordinance to amend the 2021 Finance Budget.
Any questions?
Okay, next we have introductory resolution 20-01, considered in planning. This is a resolution authorizing the mayor entering to agreements with various small businesses for distribution of COVID-19 ARIZAC funds.
Any questions?
And then lastly, we have introductory resolution 20-02, considered in the MPA Committee. And this is a resolution authorizing this to be a Binghamton Assessor to carry over select homeowner exemptions to the 2021 assessment role, provide alternative exemption application methods, and eliminate in-person application renewals.
Madam, Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to amend introductory resolution 21-02, which may be read into the record by Corporation Council, please.
I will read in the, there should have been three additional paragraphs. But the last paragraph ended with, um, that was present of the 2020 assessment role and be it further resolved that the City of Binghamton authorizes the city assessor may require a renewal application to be filed when he or she has reason to believe an owner who qualified for the exemption on the 2020 assessment role may have since changed his or her primary residence, added another owner to the deed, transferred the property to a new owner or died. And be it further resolved that the City of Binghamton will not require eligible persons to file a renewal application for any reason. And be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately and expire on May 1, 2021. That's the end of the amendment.
Thank you. So now we need a motion to approve the preferred agenda, correct? Please, that would be?
This is Councilwoman Friedman. Sorry, I just have a question.
Well, can I, can I interrupt for one second? I heard Council, Councilman Skringi made a motion. I need a second and then we can have discussions. Second. Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, Councilwoman.
Thank you. I, you said that you sent that out as an email?
No, I sent it to Lee.
Oh, okay. Could you please?
As an email to Lee, I wasn't sure so that he'd have a copy of it at the meeting. I can forward that to everybody on council as well.
Yes, that would be great. I would like to have that in writing, please.
Right, just a reminder that the purpose behind this is that the state does not want our residents aged 65 and older and those with disabilities, generally they have to come into the assessor's office in order to renew their exemptions. Right, so the purpose behind this is to get automatic renewals unless the assessor determines that for some reason they no longer qualify. And the form specifically comes from New York State.
So now we can, we'll need a motion to approve the preferred agenda, correct?
Madam President, point of, does my, does my, does my amended motion, does that need a roll call or a vote?
Yes. Yes, you need to vote on the amendment before you vote on the preferred agenda.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, so we'll take a roll call on the amendment to this last piece of legislation here. Councilman Skringi.
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley.
Aye.
Councilwoman Friedman.
Aye.
Councilman Burns.
Aye.
Councilman Strawn.
Aye.
Councilman Scanlon.
Aye.
And President Resniti.
Aye.
That's seven ayes, zero nays on the amendment.
Madam President, I'll make a motion at this time to accept the preferred agenda as amended.
And I will second.
And now we'll need a motion to?
The full roll. Okay. So this is for the preferred agenda as amended. Councilman Skringi.
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley.
Aye.
Councilwoman Friedman.
Aye.
Councilman Burns.
Aye.
Councilman Strawn.
Aye.
Councilman Scanlon.
Aye.
President Resniti.
Aye.
That's seven ayes, zero nays.
And so now, thank you, everyone. We're gonna move on into Councilmember comments. I think we'll start with District 1. So let's start with the Council.
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to wish everyone a Happy New Year. Hope everyone is doing well. And that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Freeman. No, Councilwoman Riley.
Thank you, Council President. This is Councilwoman Riley. Again, I second Councilman Skringi's sentiment, wishing everyone a Happy New Year because that gives us new ideas, new, new plans, and time to set a plan for this council year. Right now, we are all aware that there's turmoil happening in our country, not only to mention what's happening at the, in Washington, D.C., but because the COVID pandemic is still affecting many lives. And it is becoming a problem and it's a reality. So I want to thank the neighbors, again, that have supported each other throughout this pandemic. Because even if we don't recognize it, there are subtle traces of it affecting all of our lives. So we have to lean on each other. I do want to thank Council President for that announcement about the executive order 203 update. That was going to be part of my discussion tonight because I am getting emails about it. That is a critical piece in New York State as well as in the governance of a city as, again, we see what's happening in our capital. Residents are interested and we need to know. So I look forward to receiving that update. It has been some time and this is a new year. I want to give everyone the opportunity to start with a fresh slate. So as we start hearing about 203, I hope we can also receive the reports that I've requested regarding the safety and crime in our various districts. I've been requesting those since July of 2020 and I've CC'd all of you. I've received one response, no reports. And that is a part of my duties as a city council person. I think, again, we always talk about transparency and building bridges, even Council President Scanlon and I, and even you, Council President Resniti. We talked about bonding as a unit so we can govern more effectively. And number one in term, in, in, in our move to do such would be transparency and be honesty and giving and providing information so that we are able to do our jobs effectively. And so I just want to highlight that. New year, new opportunity. So new opportunity to receive reports, new opportunities to receive information and updates from the mayor. We did get a phone call about the snow, so I was excited about that. So we're moving in the right direction and I look forward to it. Again, thank you to all of the DPW that cleared our streets quickly, our postmen that have been out delivering throughout the weather, and to our, again, our neighbors and our school teachers continuing to deliver and serve our children amidst all the changes that are happening. Again, Happy New Year. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Now moving on to Councilwoman Friedman.
Thank you, Madam President. Happy New Year, everybody. 2021. I wanted to touch on the fact that this year started out with a grocery store opening on the North Side, the Greater Good Grocery. I haven't had a chance to visit yet, but I am very excited to do so. So I wanted to thank everybody who played a part in making that happen. The North Side has been a food desert for quite some time. And the lack of access to fresh produce and other, you know, fresh, fresh, healthy food contributes to a lot of health issues. And it's kind of a vicious cycle. It, you know, places that are heavily affected by poverty tend to not have grocery stores or what, what's available is maybe prepackaged processed food. And it's, it's hard to get to grocery stores sometimes. So I'm really, really excited. I also wanted to shout out the person who, I believe, initially brought this issue to light or kind of shed light on the fact that the North Side is a food desert, which is former Councilwoman Leah Webb. I believe that she was instrumental in getting the ball rolling on this project. So thank you to everyone who was involved. I can't wait to visit. And I think that is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Let's move on to Councilman Burns.
Thank you, Madam President. I echo the, my colleagues, the three colleagues in front of me, I had to say, Happy New Year. And it was Leah Webb, actually, who brought the whole situation over on the North Side to put on everybody's radar. And, but I do want to congratulate the mayor for, for getting it done. And, um, I guess I'm just kind of upset about this whole thing that happened in Washington today. I can't quite get it out of my, uh, blood here right now, what's going on. So I'll just, in there, that I hope that it ends peacefully. And Happy New Year, everybody. Thanks.
Thank you. Moving on to Councilman Strawn.
Thank you, Madam President. I just go the sentiments and wish everybody a Happy New Year. Also, I just, it's gonna be an exciting year. I think there's a lot of good things. As Councilwoman Friedman said, the, the new grocery store is very exciting over on the North Side. I just see a lot of good things happening around the city. And, you know, there's always challenges, but I'm excited about this year. Obviously, it'll be an interesting year with, with us being our second year and the, will be last year of Mayor David's administration. So I hope we can make this a real, real positive finish for, for Mayor David. And, and as we will be involved in some level with a campaign for a new mayor, I think it'll be, be an exciting year to be a part of. So I look forward to working with everyone and, and have a, have a good evening.
Thank you. Let's move on to Councilman Scanlon.
Thank you, Madam President. So I'm not sure anybody's aware of this, but in the, in the past two weeks, there's been nothing short of six different shootings across the city, different spots. Some are publicized. I think one made a paper on Sunday or made a news on Sunday, but most are marked. So I'd like to take this opportunity again to praise the Binghamton Police Department, the men and women who keep us safe out there. To my knowledge of this council, there's two people on this council who have not done a ride along. I would encourage you to do that, as I have in the past. I think it would change your perspective on the Binghamton Police Department. And who knows, you might even support the Binghamton Police Department. So that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you, Madam President.
Thanks, Councilman Scanlon. Okay, so I just want to also, well, first I want to say thank you to everybody for your support. And as I'm in this new position, please bear with me as I'm kind of working now some of the uncertainties and, and learning from everybody. So thank you for that. I wanted just quickly to say a big thank you to DPW. We had another storm, snowstorm, not too long ago. Thankfully, much smaller than the one a couple of weeks ago. But it was heavy, it was messy, and they were right on it. And so thank you very much for that. I want to say thank you to our police department, Councilman Scanlon, thank you for reminding us of that until we get reminded enough, frankly. And also, what Councilwoman Friedman was saying regarding the grocery store, I'm, I'm very, very excited. I haven't been, but I'm going to. It's been 25 years, or I don't know, over 20 years of an area without a grocery store. And I know there have been, you know, many attempts and many promises. But finally, you know, I'm, I'm thrilled to see that it has come to a completion. And I want to thank Mayor David and his administration for the hard work that went into that. And for everybody that has been involved in something like this. We're talking about food, we're talking about, you know, the very basics for folks to feel safe and welcome in their communities. Happy New Year. We're living in strange times, but we have to believe that we're also living in good times. I'm excited about this upcoming year and working with my colleagues and administration. So thank you. With that, I would like to take a motion to adjourn meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Good night.
Good night. Good night, you guys. That was...